Nominate Steven Pagnata.
I, Steven Pagnata, do solemnly swear.
I, Steven Pagnata, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
This is the one time you get to talk. Lauren's quiet all year long.
We'll now call for nominations for the Board Vice President. Any nominations?
I nominate Rob Cypher.
Seconds? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Robert Cypher, you are now the Board Vice President.
I, Robert Cypher, do solemnly swear.
I, Robert Cypher, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, everybody. Good evening. So, the next item on the agenda is to appoint a district clerk. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby appoint Lauren Zagorski Trill for the purpose of district clerk to serve in the pleasure of the Board for the 2016-2017 year at an annual rate pay of $11,410. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, all in favor? Discussion, discussion, sorry. All in favor? I'll get this announcement. Congratulations, Lauren. Number five.
Just to be swift.
Oh, I have to swear, you? I'll go slow. I, Lauren Zagorski Trill.
I, Lauren Zagorski Trill.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk for the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk for the Board of Education.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Number five. Appoint a district treasurer. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby appoint Faith Sparks to the position of treasurer to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2016-2017 school year. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, Dave. Number six, appoint a claims auditor. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby appoint Mike Oliveri to the position of claims auditor to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2016-17 school year at the annual rate of pay of $10,790. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? So, we move into the section of the meeting that's presentations and comments by the Board members. I do want to welcome Rob and Dodge, our newest Board members. This is their first meeting, so what I'd like to do is have you guys speak first. So, you can fight it out, or we'll let Dodge go first. Let me see. Alphabetical order.
Thank you, President. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife and family for letting me be part of the Board. It's going to take time away from them, so I do thank them. I also look forward to working with the administration, teachers, Board members, parents, students, anything I can do to make things better for the district and the community. I believe in this district and community, and I will do anything to support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dodge. Rob?
Thank you, Steven. Congratulations, Dodge. I would like to take this time for a first time publicly and thank my family, of course, my wife and my children, for allowing me the opportunity to serve the community. I'd like to thank the community, the administration, and the former Board for their support in as far as even running for election and pursuing the position. I look forward to working with my fellow Board members, the school administration, and the teachers and the community on continuing to improve and build upon the great academic institution we have here in Tuckahoe. My goals are to assist in implementing the remaining goals and initiatives from the prior strategic plan, which I know was an exhaustive but rewarding chore overseen and met head-on by the prior Board and administration. I would be remiss not to thank Julio, Kathy, and Henry for their time, energy, and commitment as Board members. There are so many parties, scenarios, procedures, and concerns that are involved in every decision that may go unnoticed. Every decision involves many layers of consequence. I look forward with great enthusiasm and excitement in serving the community as a Board member, and will do so with the responsibility for our children and their future as the first priority, but always with the eyes of a parent, a resident, and as a taxpayer of this community as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Welcome. Michelle?
I have no comments. I just also want to welcome Dodge and Rob on the Board. Look forward to working with you both in the year ahead.
Thank you. I just got a couple of things. First, I wanted to congratulate the two of you guys. It's big shoes to fill for the Board members that have departed. I'm sure are watching on TV. They will be missed. But from what I've seen so far at meetings, you guys are very passionate about kids and what's fair for the district. And you want to do what's best for the district, so I'm glad that you guys will be serving alongside with us. I also want to congratulate all the kids that graduated. I got to attend the middle school, the fifth grade, and the high school. And it's funny, when I was sitting watching the fifth grades graduating kids, I was getting teary-eyed, and I didn't have any kids in the fifth grade because it's pretty emotional when you go down to Cottle and you see those parents all crying, knowing that their kids are leaving elementary school. I did have a chance to get up and say a couple of words at the persuasion of George Albano, and I just told the kids, "Don't be afraid. Middle school's a lot of fun." So, for those kids making the transition to middle school and high school, or those coming in for kindergarten, you couldn't have picked a better place to be. There's a lot of love in this community, a lot of love for these kids, so I'm sure it'll be a nice transition for them. And other than that, just wanted to wish everybody a safe summer. This will be our last meeting potentially. Well, we'll have a little meeting on the 18th. This will be our last big meeting. It goes by fast. We're into July. And before you know it, we'll be buying notebooks and stuff, getting ready for kids to come back to school, so enjoy it while it lasts. I'll move on from there. Then we'll move on to the comments by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. So, I guess protocol's been Carl first and then Charlie. Is that what we've been doing?
No, I'm going to go first, although Carl will be going first very soon. In either case, also, I would like to echo the congratulations to the various new members of the Board and to say that I've not had the experience of serving on a Board of Education, at least, but certainly sat at the table long enough. But I will tell you, I'm told by former Board members that it can be a very gratifying experience. Believe it or not, next week, I've got a get-together with some former Board members in Palom, and it's, call it a reunion of sorts, if you like. But there will actually be nostalgia amongst this group of Board members of many, many years reflecting back on their achievements and how they miss being on the Board. So, I'm sure you're not at that stage yet, but maybe you will reach that point. In any case, Tuckahoe was very fortunate to have such capable people serving. I would also like to welcome Lee Liu, who is joining us, not to go unnoticed here, is our new finance official, very outstanding professional, great experience and reputation that she brings to Tuckahoe. I was very much, very happy to see you here, Lee. I don't know if you'd like to say some comment, or say hello, or what would you like to do?
I'd like to say hello and thank you. I've had a busy week getting started here, immersing myself in the business affairs of the district. It's a busy time for us in the business office in the summer, and I look forward to working here.
And I will now turn to Carl, actually. And he, I believe, has some valuable reports to share as well.
Sure, sure. And I'd also welcome our new Board members, and Lee Liu. All three of these individuals, I think, have hit the ground running. They're eager and went in headfirst as far as learning, and I look forward to working with all of you. With the summer well underway, at this time, we have a number of different renovation projects going on, cleaning projects. Our facilities department is working very hard the moment the students left. As most of you know, the Cottle School is near record enrollment at this point. We have nearly 600 students attending Cottle, which is more than we've ever had. And there is a very legitimate space issue down at the elementary school. In addition, we had a few challenges that we learned about late in the school year as far as additional demands on space at Cottle. We had a need for a reading classroom, a small special education classroom, as well as to relocate our kindergarten, excuse me, our pre-kindergarten program back to the Cottle School. We were leasing space elsewhere. We needed to leave. That space was no longer available. We searched everywhere, but the only possibility was to bring our pre-K back to Cottle. Therefore, we explored many options. The Board was briefed. Administration deliberated over this for many hours. And we came to the conclusion that the option that had the least negative impact on students would be to convert the art room to instructional space. And this basically places art on a cart, which is what people call it. And what that means is the art program at Cottle will now travel and be delivered in the students' classrooms. It is far from ideal, but this is something that we needed to do. And of course, academics always take priority. And we're hoping that this is just temporary. Just this past Thursday, Lee, myself, and a good number of community people that serve on our facilities committee met and listened to a presentation from our architect, who the Board approved several months back, Russ Davidson from KG&amp;D Architects, a very reputable firm. They've worked on many, many Westchester projects over the years. And Russ has been working with administration and listening to different ideas from different people. And I thought he put together some very creative ideas and proposals, different variations on what we could do at Cottle to expand the space and then also take a look at existing shared spaces. Ideas that are being considered are, for example, this space that we're in, also the Library Media Center at Cottle. We think it is time to maybe consider some upgrades. Our auditoriums, we believe, do not have the capacity right now to handle a lot of our events, so Russ Davidson is looking at that, as well as athletics and our gymnasiums. In addition, we certainly need instructional space. Russ, give or take a few students, was saying that Cottle is really equipped to handle about 500 students. But we are at 600, and we have development in Tuckahoe, as everybody knows. So, we are hoping to move this process along. I know Lee, I believe, has scheduled a July meeting. We have Russ coming back to have continued discussion with the facilities committee. The summer is a bit of a challenge. People take vacations, and we understand that. But we do believe it's important to keep this process moving along. Things will really ramp up in the fall, and that is when we will welcome the community to come, have discussion with the Board, join us. I'm sure we will have many presentations throughout the fall. It'll be the big initiative of next school year. But we really need to deal with this and figure out what is the best option to improve our facilities and give students the ideal learning conditions that we're able to afford. Money is cheap right now with this Brexit. Our understanding is, and I talked to Lee a little bit about this, that interest rates are at an all-time low. So, that is good for us. Our bond rating, Jim Reese, did leave us in very good shape. We have an improved bond rating. Therefore, I think it may be the perfect timing to really move forward with this. And I am excited to take the lead along with Lee Liu. And we'll have more information at every meeting going forward. Any questions? Thank you, Carl.
Could we put that, the facilities update on as new business, or next meeting it'll be old business, so that at every meeting, there will be a place on the agenda that will address where we're at?
Yes, I agree with that. Carl, I do want to say, behind the scenes, the search for our pre-K was not left without effort. I mean, Carl, how many places did you go visit yourself? A dozen?
I think, yeah, maybe 11.
I mean, this was not something that we had anticipated as a district. And we're trying to do the best we can, and it wasn't from a lack of effort that we're in the position that we're in. So, I just want to publicly say thank you because I think you went way above and beyond what anybody would have expected you to do. So, thank you on that. And we will support Ms. Durbin in every way possible. We've already ordered equipment for her, helping her reorganize her space and her program. Students will still have art, and that's the good news. And hopefully, what we're thinking is this is just temporary. Maybe a couple of years. And thanks to Ms. Durbin for being flexible in a difficult situation. It is what it is, in a way. Okay, so now we get to the first recognition of the audience. And what we ask is that you guys come up and talk about things that are on the current agenda. At the end of the meeting, we'll have a chance for comments from the audience again about anything that's on your mind. So, I will give you an opportunity to come up. Anyone? Okay. We're going to go to old business, which is the reading of the policy for field use. And before I read it, I know, Michelle, you and Rob had gone to a committee meeting in regards to that. And I thought maybe, instead of reading it, maybe you guys could just talk a little bit about what was uncovered at that meeting and where we're at right now before I read the policy. That's okay.
You want to go ahead? Sure. We met last week. Lee Liu was with us, Rob and I, Sally Bill TV from the Rec Department, along with residents of that Board of the perimeter of Middle Road and the turf field. What we talked about really was to try to come up with a compromise or just talk further about the proposal that is now, tonight, is the third reading of the policy, of the amendment of the policy. And what was decided, and which is being now proposed to the Board, I can just read it. It's sort of in rough notes from the meeting. But what it basically says is that the start time for use of turf field will be 10:00 a.m. on Saturdays and 11:00 a.m. on Sundays, with the exception of six Sundays in the fall, when the Tuckahoe Youth Football Program will be permitted to use the field beginning at 10:30. Teams will be permitted to access the field 30 minutes prior to start of the game. Last scheduled games on both Saturdays and Sundays will be 5:00 p.m. Tuckahoe School Athletic Teams will not be subject to this amendment. So, that was the consensus of our conversation. We also did address some other concerns of the residents along with concerns of Rob and I as Board members. And Lee took some notes there also, and some of the things she will be addressing with Anthony and facilities. We're also going to, I'll read them to you so you know what they are. One is need for additional trash bins, the securing of the shed on the turf field, the opening of alternate gates for practices and games, enforcement of parking violations such as idling, et cetera, and notification to the neighbors of when there's going to be exceptions to the policy. You know, if there's a big homecoming or even for outside permits, if there's some exception that we feel is necessary. We were told by the neighbors that in the past, notices were put in their mailbox, and just to be a good neighbor, they would have some notice as to what's going on. So, that was something that we thought we could put back into practice. So, that's where we're at. But the policy, what's in the actual amendment of the policy is what I first read, which is specific to the field use times.
Thank you. That's what I was looking at. I'm not going to read the policy because I think that that's really the only change. I think they're reasonable changes. And what I had brought up, what my concern was, was exactly that. The youth football program, the soccer program, I didn't want to limit field time where it would be detrimental to their abilities for our kids to play on the fields for a policy. So, it seems like everybody was in agreement on that. So, I don't know if there's any other comments, Rob, if you have any?
The only comment I would make is, you know, one of the things, there was plenty of discussion. We met for approximately an hour. You know, the issue is not just a school issue in the town. It's a town issue. There's just a shortage of fields. So, we're sensitive to the fact that any changes we make to our field policy affects other children throughout the town and the other fields. So, I think we met a good compromise, and I think that'll work for us going forward. But as residents of the town, I think there's issues there. We probably have to go to the town at some point and see if there's other fields that could be made available for our children collectively.
Agreed. Anybody else? Dodge? No? Okay. So, Lauren, I don't need to read it. Michelle? And it's available online, so you can look at it online. And the next steps are, we would vote on the policy at the next meeting? Is that the way I interpret it?
Right, so that could be the second reading of the amended amendment.
Well, do we have to do that, actually? Because the only amendment is the...
The one, Michelle, right, respect for...
Because this is actually the third.
See, on policies, as we have two readings, and then we adopt. So, this is the third one, except that it's...
A change.
Place the five o'clock is the last game, and it also puts into place the Sunday exceptions up to you. I mean, at this point, we follow the policy, so it's up to you if you want to adopt it now or if you want to give it...
No, we'll wait until the next meeting, and we'll adopt it then.
Yep. Great. Thank you. So, now we're going to move to the consent agenda. And what we typically do is there's a lot of items on there that don't need a lot of discussion, so we put them all on a group. Otherwise, we'll be here all night. You can see those things again online. So, I'm setting up a motion to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 49. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, all in favor? Discussion, I should say. I keep forgetting the discussion part. All in favor? Just scrolling down. 49 is a long list. So, business of the Board. The first item on the business of the Board agenda is to approve a school attorney. So, resolve that Urban Filazzo be appointed the Board Attorney for the 2016-2017 school year at the rate of $165 per hour for general matters and $180 an hour for litigation, which is the same as the 2015-2016 rate. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Item number two, approve a school attorney. Resolve that Keenan Bean, PC, be appointed as Board Attorney for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, for retainer fee of $60,000 or $5,000 per month, inclusive of a special education retainer fee and a negotiations retainer of $27,000 or $2,250 per month. Services not covered under either retainer arrangement will be billed at $225 per hour. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Michelle, discussion? I just want to say, we've been dealing with Keenan Bean, and they've been a real good partner with the district so far. We've been very happy, from my perspective as a Board member. I think this is a great deal for him to be working with. So, kudos to the previous Board for choosing these folks. I think they're doing a great job for us. So, anybody else? All in favor? Thank you. Number three, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made at the Tuckahoe Middle School Field Day, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the Generoso Pope Foundation in the amount of $5,000. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion?
I do have a concern because, as Steve knows, I'm not sure that the other Board members know. A couple of years ago, we did create a donation policy, and this donation is actually not conforming to that policy. I don't see the letter that is usually attached to the donation with the intention and therefore the pre-approval of a donation or the recommendation, and then it would then come to the Board. And it's after the fact of the event. So, for that reason, I don't see how we can accept it.
Carl, do you have any comments on it? You probably know the background on this a little better.
Actually, Dr. McDonald can talk about the event itself. I mean, it has been in place for a number of years at the middle school. This is an end-of-the-year culminating event of activities. Alan, which...
I believe we did receive the letter prior to the event that was sent, or was the intent of the letter sent prior to? Because we do have an email that says, "Yes, I will send the letter." Did the letter not get here prior to the event? Is that what obviously seems like the issue is?
We didn't get a letter. We could forward to the Board, no.
Okay, because we do have those emails that said, you know, that the letter... We actually have it even last October, saying, you know, that the letter will be sent. So, then, I guess there are...
So, that's something in future that we...
Yeah, it just puts us in an awkward position because it's not following our policy, and the policy's in place just for this very reason.
So, from what I'm understanding, there is a letter. We just don't have it here in front of us.
There was an email saying there would be a letter? It sounds like there is no letter.
And this event already took place?
Well, I think maybe then we should just table it. Let's take it off for tonight's discussion and see what to do with it going forward.
I'm guessing we could, we would have to vote if we want to table it, right? Okay. And then if we table it, what are we looking for? If there's no letter, I guess we could discuss that in executive session, right?
No.
We could discuss what's happening, learn more about it. Okay. We'll vote to table it. Do I have a motion to table the donation?
I mean, unless there's another motion, you guys want to do something different.
Well, what's the policy say without a letter? Reject the donation?
Since we've had a policy in place, this is the first time this has happened.
So, the policy would normally state what you should do in the event you do not receive the letter? Do we know what that is?
Yeah, we can't take... The idea of the policy is that this doesn't happen.
I don't want to vote on something that we're not.
Maybe you should consider to table it until we can get the policy in front of us, review it, so we can have a...
A right vote. I'm kind of thinking of something.
Proper discussion. Proper discussion.
It's possibly October email is enough for...
Is enough for that. That's what we'd like to see.
So, do you want to read the first couple of paragraphs? Only the Board of Ed may set for the school district any cluster gift or money, property or goods. The Board reserves the right to refuse to accept any gift which does not contribute towards the achievement of the district's goals or the ownership of which would tend to deplete the resources of the district. Any gift accepted by the Board or the Superintendent shall become the property of the district and not be returned without the approval of the Board and is subject to the same controls and regulations as all other properties of the district. It shall be the policy of the district to accept a gift provided it is made within statutory authority granted to school districts and has received the approval of the Board of Ed. In granting or withholding its consent, the Board will review the following factors: Terms of the gift must identify subject, purpose, beneficiary, all conditions or restrictions. The gift must not benefit a particular name, individuals, if the purpose of the gift is awarded to a single student, which means that a recipient has such award shall be made on the basis that all students shall have equal opportunity to qualify for it. If the gift is in trust, the obligation of the investment and reinvestment of the principal shall be clearly specified and the application of the income or investment proceeds shall be clearly set forth. No gift or trust shall be accepted by the Board unless it is in support of and benefit to all or to a public, particular public school in the district. It is for a purpose for which the school district legally expend its own funds. It is for the purpose of awarding fellowship to students graduating from this. Any gift rejected by the Board shall be returned to the donor or his car of estate within sixty days, together with a statement indicating the reasons for rejection of such gift adopted July 1st, 2014. So, Michelle, I think what you're referring to may have been policy that was put in place.
So where do we find that policy?
May have been procedure.
Procedure, procedure, right. What is it? Oh, okay.
No, go ahead.
No, no, it's okay.
So should we table it until we research it more? Do you think you need to look a little bit more into it, Lauren?
Was the policy broken? Does any...
Well, I think she's saying it's not the policy, the procedure, the procedure.
Well, I would just like to suggest that if there's any misgiving at all, that certainly the gift could be accepted at a future meeting and attached to that could be the appropriate papers, the paperwork that's required and a background, perhaps Carl could include that or Ellen could include a fuller description of the event itself and more than sufficient materials that you would need to have to know how the money was being used. It is, again, a gift that still needs to be accepted though by the Board.
All right, so I'm going to suggest that we table it until we get a little bit more clarity on it and we put it up on the agenda for the next meeting. Is that fair enough? Okay, so do I have a motion? Second, Michelle, first, Rob. Discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Okay. I do want to thank the Generalso Pope Foundation for their offer of the $5,000 of fund. Thank you. Accept a donation whereby the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the Varsity Cheerleading Team, and whereas the district would like to accept a donation, is hereby resolved that the district will accept a donation from the Tuckahoe Gridiron Club in the amount of $483.51. And there is a letter on there. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second? Dodge, all in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor? Thank you to the Gridiron Club. I said the Tuckahoe Gridiron Club. Much appreciated. Item number five, service agreement. Resolve to approve a service agreement with the Educational and Management Services for the period beginning July 1st, 2015 and ending June 30th, 2016 at a monthly rate of $500 for the stack services for 2015 and 16, the total expenditure was $6,000. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second? Rob, discussion?
Just for clarity on this, this is for the prior period, 15 to 16, and then we have a proposal for this upcoming year?
Lauren, I'm assuming that's what we spent last year? Or was that 2015, 2016, 2016, 2017? Yeah, it was the wrong year. I just read the... So let's reread it and so let's scratch that motion and we'll redo it. So resolve to approve a service agreement with the Educational and Management Services for the period beginning July 1st, 2015 and ending June 30th, 2016. Well, those dates are wrong too, right? So it should be July 1st, 2016.
And ending...
And ending June 30th, 2017 at a monthly rate of $500 for stack services for the year 2016, 2017, which is $6,000. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And inter municipality agreement, item number six, resolve to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign a 2016 Eastchester inter municipality agreement for the street resurfacing and repairs of asphalt concrete. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Rob, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Item number seven, consultant agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Andrea Rasso-Eccoli for oral motor sensory and feeding therapy for the 2016-2017 school year at the following rates of up to a maximum of $5,000. Homeschool-based therapy sessions, 45 to 60 minutes for $175, team meetings for $175. And Lauren, again, that probably should read 2016, 17? $13,387?
That's what was paid in the prior period.
That was what was paid, okay. So what was paid was 2015, 2016, $13,387. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Michelle, discussion? All in favor?
Question? Discussion, yes. So a maximum of $5,000, but last year we paid $13,387. Is there a change in what's expected in services?
Yes, yeah. These are all, the next few items, including this one, were all very specific to individual student needs. So we may have had two or three students receiving services from this particular service provider and possibly this year there is more. So we've gone through each one of these and you will see adjustments also.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? All in favor? Thank you. Item number eight, contractor services agreement. Resolve to approve an independent contractor services agreement with precise translations, LLC, for the period September 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 for interpreting translation services at the attached rate schedule not to exceed $10,000. In 2015, 2016, the expenditure was $29.30. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number nine, consultant agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Dr. Carlos Soto Longo for the period commencing July 1st, 2016 and then in June 30th, 2017 at a rate of $600 per psychiatric consultation evaluation and a $300 per CSE attendance in person or via telephone not to exceed $2,000. 2015, 16, the payment was $600. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Item number 10, consultant services agreement. Resolve to approve the consultant services agreement with Listening Partners, Inc. for the period commencing July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017 at the following rates, not to exceed $22,000. Speech therapy at $85 per hour, speech and language evaluations at $375 each, hearing services at $130 per hour. The 2015-2016 expenditure was $16,669. Do I have a motion? Michelle, Rob, second? Discussion? All in favor? Number 11, approve a letter of agreement. Resolve to approve a letter of agreement with All About Kids for the period commencing July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017 for related services at the attached rate schedule not to exceed $4,200. There was no payment to this group in 2015, 2016. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Number 12, consultant agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement for consultant services with Benaschrober for psychological evaluations, educational evaluations and social histories for the period July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at an hourly rate of $250 not to exceed $3,000. In 2015, 2016, the spends were $2,750. Do I have a motion? Dodge, first? Michelle, second? Discussion? All in favor? Number 13, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with the Westchester Institute for Human Development for assisted technology evaluations and trainings for the period July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 at the following rates not to exceed $5,000. One, discipline, $1,350. Two disciplines, $1,850. Travel cost per visit, $25. Training, $200 per hour or $550 per contracted three hours. Do I have a motion? Rob, first? Second? Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Okay. Moving on to number 14. Consultant agreement. Resolve to approve the consultant services agreement between Civic Solutions Group, LLC and the Tuckahoe Union Free School District for billing Medicaid eligible services for a fee based on 20% of the federal Medicaid revenues that the district is entitled to retain, based on approved claims for services provided to special education classified students beginning July 1st, 2015 and ending...
16.
July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017, not to exceed $6,000. Last year, the total payment was $42.40 and $0.44. Do I have a motion? Dodge, first? Michelle, second? Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Consultant agreement. Resolve to approve the agreement for consultant services between Elaine Zakoni and the Tuckahoe Union Free School District for the literature-based creative movement program for the Tuckahoe Universal Pre-K Program at an hourly rate of $50 per session from a New York State Pre-K grant for a total number of sessions not to exceed 20 for the period beginning July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017, total not to exceed $1,000. In last year, the total payment was $1,000. Do I have a motion? Michelle, first? Second? Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Number 16, staffing agreement. Resolve to approve a staffing agreement with Pearl Care Medical Staffing LLC for the 2016-2017 school year for supplemental staffing services at the rates below not to exceed...
So do we want to put it at the not to exceed? This is one that Mr. Reese had not circled back on. At the same not to exceed as Maxim, which is the other provider?
For asking, Lee?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't have information on this one, so I'll have to get back to you.
I have a little background. I think it's a wise decision. This is basically when a school nurse is absent. We have two, one at Cottle, one at the middle high school. This is a backup. If one agency cannot produce a nurse, then we will use the other. I think it's a good recommendation. It's something we use only on an as-needed basis. So if we have the not to exceed and the Board is okay with that, I think it's a wise decision and we have two options.
Last year, they spent $46,000, about $4,600 with Maxim.
So should we put it at 5,000? Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I'll start reading it again, just to be official. Resolve to approve a staffing agreement with Pearl Care Medical Staffing LLC for the 2016-2017 school year for supplemental staffing services at the rates below not to exceed $5,000. For an RN, $60 per hour, for an LPN, $45 per hour, for CNA at $25 an hour, and we just heard it was about $4,700 spends last year. Do I have a motion? Michelle, first? Second? Rob, all, discussion? All in favor? Okay. Number 17, resolve to approve a staffing agreement with Maxim Staffing Solutions for the 2016-2017 school year for supplemental staffing services at the rates below. RN, $55 an hour, LPN, $42 an hour, CNA, $22 an hour. Last year, we spent $4,633. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second? Rob, discussion? Michelle?
So it's just that we're using two different services? Is that, is that what it is, Lee?
Yes.
And I'm guessing that's because we can never rely on one to be able to get here right away, right? Okay.
And for Maxim, I would say we have a not to exceed in regards to Pearl Care Medical Staffing.
Is there a reason that's not there?
Is there a reason we don't have a not to exceed on Maxim Staffing? It looks like they are first, our first attempt is with them and then Pearl is a backup?
Yeah, yes, yes. It's basically whoever can produce an RN first. So, yeah, we've used Maxim. We've had a relationship with them for a longer period of time, but we realized they can't always produce nursing, so then we also go to Pearl Care. So I think you could set a maximum on that.
So should we do a little bit more than 5,000 because we don't want to come back here if we're getting close to 5,000, right? Is there our first choice? I mean, that's just a question I, would you agree?
And you see the rates are comparable, I mean, slightly less.
A little less, yeah. So maybe we make this 7,000? Is that fair enough? I'm just throwing that out there.
We'll only use it if we need it.
We need it, right? We need it, we need it.
I told you.
We need it, we need it. It's a safety issue.
So we'll add in not to exceed $7,000 for 2016-2017 school year. Okay. Do I have to reread it or can we just vote? Okay. And we've got our discussion, so all in favor? Extending a contract. This is item number 18. Resolve to approve the one-year extension of transportation contract with Academy Bus Company, Inc. through the 2016-2017 school year at a 0.9% CPI. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second? Rob, discussion? All in favor? Item 19, summer transportation. Motion to approve the transportation contract with Academy Bus Company for the period of July 11 through August 11, 2016 at the rate of $350 per day. Do I have a motion? Rob, second? Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Extend a contract. Number 20, resolve to approve the one-year extension of the food services contract with Aramax Educational Services, LLC through the 2016-17 school year at 0.9% CPI. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second? Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Okay. Number 21, service agreement. Resolve to approve a service agreement with the Achieve Beyond Psychological, Speech, Language, Educational and Social History Evaluations and Special Education Teacher Services according to the rates below for the period commencing July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017 not to exceed $20,000. Note, last year, we spent $55,471. I don't have to read the rest of this, right, Lauren? Do I have a motion? Michelle, second? Rob, discussion? All in favor? School district physician. Resolve that the agreement for the school district physician with Dr. Rosemary Callag Garrus be extended for the 2016-2017 school year rate, at a rate of $10,000. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second? Rob, discussion? Thanks for keeping our kids safe. All in favor? We're getting there, folks. Extend contracts. Number 23, resolve to extend the contracts from the following lowest responsible bidders for the 2016-2017 school year at the same rate as the 2015-2016 school year. Electrical bid, Scotten, at 2015-2016, it was $53,555, and the plumbing bid was Bell Plumbing dollars, and the plumbing bid was Bell Plumbing and Heating, which in 2015-2016, we spent fourteen thousand and five dollars. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Extend an Agreement. Resolve to extend an agreement with Anthony Russo for Facility Consultant Services through September thirty of 2016 at a rate of four hundred dollars per day, not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? I've heard great things that Anthony's doing around the district, so Anthony, thanks for all your help in getting us to the next level here. We do need, there's definitely a certain need for this role, and Anthony's done a great job filling it from what I hear, so. All in favor? Approve a Bid. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District award the Ed Data bid for supplies and materials in the categories listed below and in the amounts to the vendor listed in the attached district summaries. For teaching aid, it's eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Special needs, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Science supplier, thirty-five hundred forty dollars and thirteen cents. Physical education supplies, twenty-one hundred and three dollars and nineteen cents. Office computer supplies, three thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents. Math supplies, one hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Library supplies, six hundred ninety-four and twenty-seven cents. Health and trainer supplies, one thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. General classroom supplies, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Fine art supplies, nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars and eighty cents. Audiovisual supplies, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and the total award for all of this would be fifty-three thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion? Michelle, first, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? We're going to move over to the Personnel section. So, the first item on the Personnel is a motion to appoint the following advisors and stipends for the 2016-2017 school year. Christina Sarafin, the tenth grade advisor, thirteen hundred and seventy-six dollars. Joel Abrams, the twelfth grade co-advisors, twenty-two hundred and one dollars. Andrew Colosano, the twelfth grade co-advisor, twenty-two hundred and one dollars. Edie Reedy Fernandez, the drama club advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Jennifer Kopochi, the high school geo-treasurer, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Julio Rodriguez, the high school geo-advisor, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Joanne Ornstein, the Habitat for Humanity advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Edie Reedy Fernandez, the show choir advisor, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Sandy Garuffi, the jazz band advisor, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Sandy Garuffi, the marching band director, seven thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Peggy Velisio, the high school science olympiad co-advisor, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Robert Treghi, the high school science olympiad co-advisor, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Andrew Colosano, the special ed after-school sports program advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Edie Fernandez, the spring musical choral director, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Sandy Garuffi, the spring musical orchestra director, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Kathy Moser, the spring music producer, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Kathy Moser, the spring musical art director, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Kathy Moser, the spring musical director, three thousand three hundred and one dollars. Joanne Ornstein, the National Honor Society co-advisor, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Jessica Perillo, the National Honor Society co-advisor, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Angela Georgie, the National Honor Society co-advisor, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. I'm going to need water today. James Sweeney, the show sports club advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Suzanne Diarco, the images advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Lori Parata, the varsity club co-advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Rita Gentile, the varsity club co-advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Tonnetta De Angelis, the Italian National Honor Society advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Heather Zembra, the high school art co-advisor, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Dana Case, the high school art club co-advisor, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Kim Durbin, the art club play scenery, twenty-two hundred and one dollars. Mariella Ferguson, the diversity club advisor for K through five, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Gianna Kazali, the school play assistant director, one thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Vanessa Nastri, the school play director, three thousand three hundred and one dollar. Michael McDermott, the chess club advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Jessica Bucha Hughes, the Tigers Helping Clubs Cubs advisor, one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Dwayne Downs, the assistant football coach, six thousand six hundred and two dollars. Amanda Cuppani, the varsity cheerleading coach, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, discussion? I just want to thank all the staff that's stepping up and others to help these kids out. There's a lot of activities in here that are after-school activities, and this is a great opportunity for the kids to get involved in things. And I know a lot of these things look really good when they apply to colleges, so the more things that we can have like this, I think it's just great. So, thank you all. Do I have a motion? Do I have a... All in favor? I'm going to lose my mind. Okay, thank you. Approve a Leave. Resolve to approve the leave absence of Adriana Notaro effective November twenty-first, 2016 through February twenty-seven, February twenty-seven, 2017 in accordance to FMLA. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Appoint a Social Studies teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Chilia Mosa to a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher of social studies in social studies tenure area commencing September first, 2016 and ending August thirty-first, 2019 contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of the Educational Law Sections three zero one two, three zero one two dash C and/or three zero one two dash D on a step seven MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Mosa holds professional certification in social studies five through nine. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? Paul, Charlie, you want to say anything, or?
No, I just think that she is an excellent acquisition. I think she's going to bring a lot of history to life for the kids. I was very, very impressed by a discussion with her about what she's accomplished in her other schools, and she's highly, highly recommended. I don't know if Ellen would like to add to that.
I'm very happy with her.
Great.
Thank you.
Good job. All in favor? Okay, so, welcome, Ms. Mosa. She's not here, I gather?
She's not here.
On vacation, hopefully.
Yes, she is. She's a wreck.
Appoint an Italian teacher. So, resolve on recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Michaela Viario to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of Italian in LOTE tenure area commencing September first, 2016 and ending August thirty-first, 2020, contingent...
I'm sorry, Steve.
Did I miss one?
Unless you wanted to do, you could go back.
I'll go back before or after, because I'm sorry, guys.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Italian in LOTE tenure area commencing September first, 2016 and ending August thirty-first, 2020 contingent upon achieving effective or highly effective APPR ratings to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of the Educational Law Sections three zero one two, three zero one two dash C and/or three zero one two dash D on step three MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Viario holds the initial certification in Italian seven through twelve. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Okay, let me go back, and I apologize. Appoint a teacher. Resolve on the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Julio Rodriguez to a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher of physics and science in science tenure area commencing September first, 2016 and ending August thirty-first, 2019 contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout his probationary period, consistent with the requirements of the Educational Law Sections three zero one two, three zero one two dash C and/or three zero one two dash D on a step fifteen MA thirty of the TTA salary schedule. Mr. Rodriguez holds permanent certification in physics and general science, seven through twelve. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, all in favor? Discussion? All in favor? Now, going from four to six, for those of you who are following online. Number six. Resolve to appoint the individual, following individuals at a rate of sixty dollars per hour, the TTA contract for the period ending July first, 2016 and ending August nineteen, 2016 for the ESY program. Amanda Fuller, Vanessa Nastri, and Benjamin Faber. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, all in favor? Discussion? All in favor? Summer Scholars Counselor. Resolve to appoint Renz Toledo and Jessica Berger as student counselors for the Summer Scholars Program from July eighth, 2016 through July twenty-eighth, 2016 at a rate of eight dollars and seventy-five cents per hour, not to exceed thirty-nine hours each. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? I know both of those guys get quite a lot of mentions when I go to the awards and stuff. They're doing a great job, so thanks both of you, and enjoy your summer scholar program. Sounds like fun. Do you... All in favor? Great. Welcome. They're hired. Hire some students. Okay, so now, we're going to move on to something special. I'd like to start off by saying that, well, actually, I'll do it during comments. So, number one, we're here to appoint a new trustee. Do I have a motion, and we'll have time to comment. So, resolve to appoint a new trustee July seventh through 2016 through May sixteen, 2017 due to the resignation of trustee Henry Carpazo. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Okay, so now, we will administer an oath to the new administrator.
Do you have to? I think you have to.
You want to go back and say hello?
Yeah, it was weird, because it's not in here, so I didn't know if there was another thing that was going to be in here. So, first of all, I want to thank all the candidates that came forward. It was great to see the community step up when we, as a board, were in desperate need of having somebody fulfill a position that had ended earlier than we anticipated. And what I will say is that, in speaking on behalf of the board, feel free to say anything else. The people that came forward, it was a difficult decision. We appreciate all that, everybody, and the time and efforts that they put in there and the willingness to sacrifice a lot of personal time to be on the board. And when it came down to it, we had to select one person, and we were thrilled to announce today that Danielle Neles, who was our PTA president most recently, will now be sitting up here and joining us for future board meetings for the remainder of this year. Danielle's effective time will be from July seventh through May sixteenth. May sixteenth is actually the day we elect a new board member, and at that time, there'll be three board seats open. The person who has the third highest votes in that election, we have ten people, the top three win a seat on the board, but the person with the lowest amount of those three gets the remainder of Henry's term. So, and then they would run again a year from now. So, it could be a current board member, or it could be a new board member altogether. It's a little awkward, but that's just the way state law is. So, Danielle's appointment, even though Henry had two years left on her, on his term, is only for this interim time until the next election comes, and then she would feel free and run again. So, I know Michelle's explained that more than once, but I just wanted to make that clear. That's why the dates are kind of a little off. So, Danielle, welcome, and we are now going to issue an oath of office to you, so please come up and be sworn in.
So, do you want to do another resolution just to...
Yeah, it should have had her name in there, yeah.
As that trustee?
Let's do that.
As new trustee?
Yeah, so, we'll put this as number two, and then we'll move number two to number three. So, resolve to appoint Danielle Neles effective July seventh, 2016 through May sixteen, 2017 due to the resignation of trustee Henry Carpazo. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Welcome, Danielle. Well, you've got to be sworn in. All right, so, I swear her in, or you swear in?
I swear.
I'll swear. I know you love to be public. All right. You sure you want to do this? This is your oath of office, so please repeat after me. I, Danielle Neles...
I, Danielle Neles.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States...
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of trustee...
Of trustee.
For the Board of Education...
The Board of Education.
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District...
Of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
Town of Westchester.
State of New York...
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You're in.
Thank you.
So, just have to sign here. And then, who would be appointed for Danielle? Say, we'll comment this now, or... Boy, it's my first meeting, there's a lot going on.
Let's get worse, though. It does get worse, reading along.
Hi, I just want to thank you all for appointing me and thank all the candidates that came out. It was an interesting forum that night, and I thank you for putting me in this position. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Welcome. So, that is our whole agenda. It was a little one tonight, but we do want to give folks that are here a chance to address the board and the second recognition of audience where you can speak about anything that you'd like to talk about. Just please state your name and address, right?
Tara Galati, Ninety-seven Middle Road. I would just like to hear from the board. I read somewhere that the position of middle school principal will be an interim. I'm just wondering what's going on with that process and why it's now an interim position?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll ask Charlie your call to answer.
Sure, I'm happy to take that question. As most people know, we had a number of administrative vacancies this year. Dr. McDonald, who was promoted to assistant superintendent position, that created a middle school principal vacancy. I believe we were out there with, in March or April, with a posting, which is a little late, to be quite honest with you. We did go through one full process, but did not believe that we found a candidate who we considered to be the right fit for a long-term principalship, and we are looking for a stability in a long-term principal. So, we think the next best option, and which we are in discussion on right now, is to find an interim principal to serve for the upcoming school year. It is not official yet, but we're hoping to have some person selected by July eighteenth or very shortly after.
So, I don't understand why changing it to interim. Can you just explain that?
Well, sure, we...
The same kind of people are going to come out, right? Or maybe not?
Well, no, interim is usually someone who is retired and is willing to accept a one-year assignment. The idea behind this is that if we put someone in place August through June, we can be out there early next year, so the winter of sixteen, seventeen. By January, the latest, we would have a posting, and we could do our search earlier and be out in front of all the other districts. We want to be really thoughtful. This is a key leadership position in the district, and we want to make sure we have the best person. Good thing Dr. McDonald is here. She will continue to, of course, provide support for the middle school as well as me, so you have stability within the district, and we think an interim is the best choice, and we will be out there with a very thorough early search next year. That's the thought process behind it.
And how about the assistant principal, then?
That, we have a good, strong pool of candidates. Ellen, I think about two hundred people applied?
Two hundred and thirty-four people.
Okay, so, over two hundred. We have strong candidates. We did do one round of interviews. We are doing a second round. Dr. Linehan, I think he is off this week, but he'll be back next week, and he needs to be a part of that process, and we're hoping to have someone for that position by August.
And I appreciate the question. I mean, ideally, we would want a full-time principal, but I'm not comfortable with bringing a person in here that we're not a hundred percent behind. And I think the challenge that we, as board members, and I speak on behalf of everyone here and the previous board, is we are constantly challenging the administrators to bring us
here and the previous board, is we are constantly challenging administrators to bring us the best people, and we don't want to be in a position where we're settling on someone because it's late in the game. Tara, I'm with you, my son's going into seventh grade next year, which means he's going to have three principals in his three years of middle school. It's not what I want for him, and I'm not happy about it, but we're kind of in that position, and what do we do? I mean, I don't want to bring, we, we met one candidate, and the consensus was, she was good, but it wasn't what we were looking for. And I think if we can get somebody in here in the interim who's got a lot of experience and successful experience, has a good track record, and kind of holds the fort for us for a year, until we find the right person as a board member and as parent, I feel better with that scenario than I would if, if we brought somebody in here that we weren't sold on. And lastly, to Paul's point, the one thing that makes me sleep at night, just thinking at it from a parent perspective, is that Ellen is literally next door. So it's not like our middle school principal was horrible, and we're trying to find somebody new. We had a great middle school principal that we promoted that's still in the building, that will definitely lend help. So, I, I'm wholeheartedly sorry that we're in this position, but we are. Any other questions? Terrific, so I get to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Congratulations.